2024 Board Meeting of the Fourth Board Education Qualitute Order at 7:07 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely, turn on the nuclear microphone to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, consistent with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. The public may attend in person or electronically via webex. Meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be available on the district website. I will now call all the roles. Stephen Lawrence. Sarah Beth Dilfrey. Jay Dya. Brooke Hopkins. Jeff Hughes. Lauren Franchezy. Mike Strandler.
Here.
Mike is attending remotely. Marsha. Erin Williamson.
Here, also remote.
Thank you, and I'm Lince Piazic, Chair. Staff and attendance this evening. Ms. Vanda Tenz, the Superintendent, Ms. Donna Kuhn, Director of Misses and Operations, Ms. Erin Orford, Director of Special Services, attending remotely. Ms. Annaliese Sherman. Ms. Cheryl Hopple, attending remotely. And Ms. Marsha Peachnarrow, Clerk of the Court, Deputy. I would ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Peter Smith, Mike, lead us to the feet even in the pledge. In the prayer, I do need to reply. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation, under your government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. Next on the agenda, we have correspondents. Sarah Beth. Do we have any correspondence?
There is correspondence.
Okay, so all emails and letters that have been received as board correspondents have heard from today have been posted online in Board Book. Next, public comment. Is there any public comments this evening? Please raise your hand in the participants list if you wish to make a public comment. I don't see anyone raising their hand, so we will move on. PTO. Hi Cindy.
Hi.
I'll note that written reports from the PTO can be found online in Board Book. It's always informative to look at it, so I encourage the fellow to access that before. And Cindy's going to add anything additional or highlight anything to see for now.
Okay, we've had some really amazing events with our last meeting together. Monica was able to cover, so we wanted to take a minute to highlight it. Okay, so this is our program on the page, which you guys have seen before. Since our last meeting, we achieved Math Night, International Night, which I will highlight a little bit in a minute. I do want to say that we have a book swap coming up next week, right? Yeah, next week, it's all flying by. And then we will have a spring book fair and arts night. And we are in the midst of planning for Teacher Appreciation Week and our con run. We are hoping to be able to fund our activities for the following year fully without dipping into our bank account, which is limited. But so we thank community for thinking about that ahead of time. Math night, I just want to say this is our second year of having a math night, and we're now looking at kind of having a, to be so we can keep up with ourselves, having a science night, a math night, an international night, and a arts night, all maybe not in that order, but that's what we're doing this year in that order. And then we kind of cover all of the major subjects. And of course, we have a lot of reading, language arts in between activities as well. We were really happy this year, and I'm not going to be able to attend, but we probably doubled the size of it from last year. And we also did it ourselves this year without a vendor. So I think there were about, at least 100 kids came through during the course of the night, and that was really great to see. We wanted to thank Betsy Hope for coordinating it and Student Council for providing a bake sale for able to have a fruit truck this year, and it was very exciting evening, so thank you. And then International Night. This was a bit of a crazy endeavor. We thought it would be highly successful if 200 people bought tickets, but 350 people bought tickets. And we were in a slight panic, but somehow we pulled it off. So we envisioned, it was thought of to have two parts of this. One was the ticketed food, which they decided to cater. There's a lot of ways you could do International Night. We just wanted to have something that we tried to start with, and we've got learnings. But you see pictures here of Vonda and Lisa's especially put up, so you can see how hard they worked to serve food. And they stayed way longer than we told them they had to stay and serve the food. They appreciated. And it just worked out really well. So you got food in the cafeteria and ate it. Some kids even tried new food. And then, this is the part I just want to highlight especially was, we ended up doing in the North Gym, an international cultural thing. And we just asked parents, you know, families to highlight what they wanted. We had people come out from either they were from a country, some of them are refugees from the country, some of them, their ancestors were from the country. Like, we had like a full variety of how people celebrated our community. And it was just completely organic how we came up with this, except for Italy, which I was like, we need to represent Europe somehow, let's get something over there. At that end up being a wonderful table. But I really wanted to thank the community for just, it was a really warm and nice night for everyone, no matter where your family hailed from. And I think it was also really insightful to kind of appreciate how much we do have in our community. It was amazing to me, and I just don't think people realize that's why they were there. If you were there, I hope you enjoyed it, and if you weren't, I hope you come next year. And cupcakes, I learned, are American. And we did provide cupcakes for everybody free of charge. And last, just to highlight, we have started the process of giving out our teacher grants and funding those materials. And so that was new since last time, and underway as are the scholastic grants. So as usual, thank you for your support. If anyone has any questions?
As usual, thank you for everything that PTO does. And it's just, every year I'm amazed by the things that PTO comes up with, by the number of volunteers that work with PTO, by the staff that's involved in it. It's, it's just so heartwarming. I think it's what makes Woodbridge Teacher Road School what we are. It's lovely, so thanks.
Yeah, I should mention it's been a goal of ours to get more and more staff involved in each of these events by sort of inviting them very targeted. And we have been, I've been happy about that, so thank you too. Also, Lisa, for that, that's really very strong.
That's great, because you know, when I always sit to the coaches, the T stands for teacher. In the PTO. Thanks for that. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. The minutes from February 26th, regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with budget, budget summary, the detailed financial report, and the combining financials. Is there anyone on board who wishes to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to exempt the consent agenda.
I believe there will be approved of the consent agenda as soon as possible.
Second, Jeff. Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Jeff Hughes. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I see Erin and Mike also have their hands raised, so it's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you all for that. Moving on to reports. Board Member Appreciation. Ms. Tenz.
That's me. So, you know, I have a little award to share, and there is, you know, just a very small token of our appreciation, you know, at your table, but also a gratitude card. I took this as an opportunity to express my gratitude to you. It's something that I started earlier off with our complication. Sharing that we were looking very closely at how gratitude can strengthen a team. When you appreciate and recognize your team members' strengths, it allows you to lean on them and celebrate them, and it makes you a stronger team. So I did take a second to appreciate you. But I do just want to, you know, share that I sent a letter to the community earlier today, and I shared publicly that I am most grateful for our staff at Teacher Road School. I shared this actually, that the most recent board select meeting. We can have the best budgets, best Board of Education, the best school facilities, but without the best teachers and staff, we have nothing. And I'm really proud and grateful to share that we too have the best staff at Teacher Road School. Every single person contributes to the success, uniqueness, and amazing system of education that we have here. But at this meeting, I wanted to stretch that phrase, the best Board of Education. And, you know, take a minute to thank our Board of Education during National Board of Education Month. So as a reminder, board members are volunteers, they are not paid. They offer their time, their expertise, they come to meetings, they log on to meetings, they participate in committee meetings, they send questions, they send ideas. They, they are engaged far beyond what you see for a few hours here at length, all to help govern our school districts. And school boards are charged with making difficult decisions. Sometimes they're contentious, they're often filled with people with lots of opinions. And board members have to, on a volunteer basis, sift through a great deal of information and consider what is best for the whole district, and it's not easy. And I recognize that. I've worked with many Boards of Education and nonprofit organizations, and I believe that boards that are driven by a mission that is supported by all members are in fact the most successful. Our Board of Education, Woodbridge, is outstanding. I believe you are mission-driven, you treat your charge and each other with dignity and respect. It is not common across the state of Connecticut or across our country, and it's appreciated. So, you know, through your dedication and your leadership and your support and collaboration with each other and our school and the other organizations that build our school, you are in fact dedicating for your mission and building our very successful school system that supports our learners. So I want to thank you for making this a personal priority. You know, I've shared before, I've been married to a Board of Education Chair. It takes a lot of time, it takes more time, commitment to do that. I want you to know you are appreciated. And, you know, again, I think it's important that the community hears your name, so I would like to honor you by reading the name of each board member and recognize your service. And then Piazic Chair, Stephen Lawrence, Myster, Sarah Beth Dilfrey, Secretary, Jay Dya, Lauren Franchezy, Brooke Hopkins, Jeff Hughes, Michael Strandler, and we are in alphabetical order. We, you know, on behalf of Kid List, we do appreciate you. So thank you for this chance.
Thank you, thank you so very much. We appreciate your stuff. I just, I have to say that I just recently read an article in the Page Journal, and it talked about how important people who volunteer for, you know, in your community, on the Board of Education, but really not the Woodbridge Commission, so this town. People who volunteer, they are, they are the givers to other communities. And those are people who, on a weekly, monthly, daily basis, reach out and do things to make Woodbridge a better place. And the article said, without any thinking, you know, no one does this, 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 and everything. And we do it because we feel the care and we're vested. And I have to say, as Board of Education, how impressive what the group of people in my life makes of Woodbridge. It really, it touches my heart, and I consider each and every one of you my fellows and my friends. So I thank you for that. And our first witness here, Mr. Cardoza, and he kindly has included a word, "facing", a proclamation, I don't know who would like to read it, or maybe not. That would be very nice. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's very hard to say anything after that, Lynn, so thank you. Whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. And public schools are being held to higher standards of accountability than ever before at both the state and federal level. And whereas the members of the Board of Education, Woodbridge Board of Education, represent an invaluable resource in this community as local decision-makers responding to the challenges of assuring our school meets the higher standards. And these school board members must formulate policies and assure that all children learn to the fullest potential. And whereas these board members continually strive for improvement and progress with an understanding of the need for commitment to the highest standards of student achievement and are working diligently to assure that our young people are educated and prepared for the future. And whereas the men and women elected to those positions deserve recognition and thanks, recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to public education and the children of our community. Now therefore, Woodbridge Board of Selectment and Woodbridge School District thank all members of the Woodbridge Board of Education for their tireless and devoted service to our children, our schools, and our community, and urge all residents of our community to join us in expressing appreciation to these exemplary public servants and hereby designate March 18th, 2024 as School Board Member Day. Signed by B. Cardoza, First Selectment, and Vanda Tenz, Superintendent. We're very proud of our school here. You should take a great deal of pride in what you do, and I'm very proud of you, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you're doing. And we're looking forward to doing more, more wonderful things. Thank you.
And Nita, I thank you for taking the time to come tonight to recognize my colleagues and myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're grateful too. So now we'll move on to, it's always fun at a March meeting, you know, I always feel like someone. So thanks for that. Super generous.
It is a pleasure. Just, I'm going to touch on a few things. Our enrollment report is improving, it's falling steady at about 7:06, and we usually do start to see an uptick in the spring. So there it goes. Regarding our budget, as you're aware, the Board of Education's improved budget was moved to the Board of Finance as proposed with a 3.9% increase. And we continue to await for final approval. I believe it will be this Wednesday evening as the town works through a very challenging and important budget process, and we stand in partnership with them and know that we will support our decisions that they have to make. I did send out a community update, it went out today, and it covers a lot of states, but it does their touchy-hon for, for everybody. So our summer roof and grounds project is almost set. We expect to receive the required state of Connecticut approval to release our roof bid early this week. We have been informed that we're in great shape to get a quality roof from contractor by late spring. And you get the work of replacing approximately 1/4 of our roof as soon as school gets out in June. Quite soon after that work gets started, we also anticipate that in stages, the grounds project work will also begin to address some of the water consumption concerns as well of the repairs that are definitely needed in some of our walking services. And as a reminder, due to these facts, all of our summer programs and bracket that relocated and civilian grounds will not be accessible this summer. Building needs space exploration, so we continue to progress in our work to identify possible options that may address our space issues at Teacher Road School. So just this week on Monday, we posted our request for qualifications and proposals to solicit interest from firms who would like to participate in generating information around possible options and their feasibility to address our space needs. This process is going to take a great deal of thought, planning, and time, and will require input from the entire community. No decisions on anything will be made, so we are much further along with the process than any, any, any months from now. This is the first of many gathering information that will help all of us consider what might be best for us to move forward. As part of this process, it's important for us to obtain input from our community regarding community awareness, Stephen, and opinions on our space needs and how best to address our short and long-term building educational needs. For that reason, we partnered with an education consulting group to help us build community understanding of our space needs and to obtain community input. Building a sense of community is one of our Board of Education's explicit goals this year. So over the next several months, we will conduct surveys and focus groups with this consulting group that will gather insights, opinions, and ideas from parents and students and educators, but also from local businesses, governments, government officials, townspeople, any town constituent, so that we can collectively appreciate what our community believes and sees about the urgency of short-term needs and to assess the value of a comprehensive approach to long-term goals for life. We will continue to keep price of all this information as we move forward. Teaching and learning, I just wanted to touch on a few things that can't be all facility-related. So on Friday, our children will be home, but our building will be full of adult partners, and we will be immersed in a day of professional learning that moves forward one of the goals for our strategic plan. We're going to further our understanding of project-based learning and how it aligns with our goals and beliefs and actually much of our current practice. In the area of literacy, regularly, our staff continue to learn and implement science reading strategies. And we're currently meeting and reviewing and narrowing programs to select the best one to meet the needs of our learners as required by this meeting. We are also exploring math resources that support curriculum enrichment compacting into differentiating that we mentioned in our last meeting. And so it's just important for me to show you that Teacher Road School is not just a place that our children are learning, our staff are learning every day. We have a retiring teacher, it's always a bittersweet. You know, it's a celebration for somebody when they retire, and it's, it's a loss for a community. So Elena will be, her teacher's grade four, and this may be the decision to retire. Elena has taught multiple grades, she joined us in 2005, and she's worked with many different presidents and probably superintendents. But what I could see, you know, through talking with Lisa and reviewing her file, is that there are consistent, there are some consistent patterns. And one of them that is noteworthy is that she has a strong passion for teaching writing. And her high level of skill with supporting learners in writing workshop has really helped a lot of children develop their own passion and skills. Visiting her classroom and reviewing previous administrative notes about Elena, as I did look, show a pattern of consistency around her belief in modeling writing strategies that support the teacher, the teaching of the writer and not writing. She's all about the learner. She's also demonstrated a commitment to professional learning, and Lisa shared that she's worked collaboratively with her grade four team on targeted professional learning in the area of writing and literacy strategies. So it should be clear that her dedication to Teacher Road School is appreciated, and will be missed and wish her the best. And that is that.
Thank you. Any questions from board members on this report? Okay, move on to technology upgrade updates. Vanda Tenz.
I asked, I asked Mr. Villius to join us to represent the tech team, as he is the leader. There have been a lot of things happening, pieces regarding technologies and changes and improvements, and all of that has required commitment of the board and also funds from the community. So it's always a nice idea to learn how our money has been spent and invested in helping better the education for our system. And Tiffany is excited to be here, and it must be very fun things to share.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Tenz. Thank you for having me aboard this evening. As Superintendent Tenz brought out, we have done a lot this year, a lot when it comes to technology. And giving you board members an update, purpose to be here. So some, some of the amazing things we've heard in part, some of our network infrastructure updates, really helping us to have a updated cohesive network is, it's a breath of fresh air. And some of the challenges that we were able to overcome with the construction of our previous network, we're able to leverage some new technologies and some abilities. We are able to expand our coverage of wireless coverage within the building and external to the building, some of which will impact our learners, and some will, will address some security issues that we had, safety and security issues that we had, that are going to be awesome and amazing to, to take advantage of. By doing some of those updates, we've able to find some ways to kind of leverage some of that older technology in other ways that we can definitely save the districts some money. So I know that is going to be amazing as well. It has given us the ability to be more flexible. Before in past, we would have to rely on the services of contractors and consultants to make needed changes, updates, and upgrades. And a lot of that I can do remotely from my phone. Case in point, our facilities manager and I, we stumbled across a problem with our microturbine. The vendor couldn't see it or connect to it remotely. Within a matter of minutes, we were able to hop on the roof, pull up my laptop, and get the issue resolved right then and there, giving us the, the flexibility to be agile and able to respond to our needs here at Teacher Road School. So it's really one of the benefits that I really, really appreciate, making the move and having the investment and the commitment to the, to technology. And it's going to open up greater potential with the devices that students are using in the classroom and just reliability for both learner and teacher as well. So we're really excited about that. This year, another big thing, we started with Chromebooks in sixth grade, the admin team. Well, this was a great way to leverage different technologies to help bridge that gap between the, when our learners leave Teacher Road School or transition to AMITI. It's just one less thing that they have to worry about. We know that, if we can recall back that, that transition when we went to middle school, those anxious feelings, well, when it comes to technology, we've kind of removed that because they're starting to learn that now. We've sent out surveys to teachers and students, and we received positive feedback. You know, some things that we have to work on as well, but largely positive feedback on their quickly adapting to the technology and how they've been able to improve in their keyboarding skills. And just, it feels like a real work device versus, you know, something that is easily used for other things. But we're still committed to using iPads in the classroom because, as many of you know, we are an Apple-distinguished school. I know there are some areas that I definitely would like to invite our teachers, our technology teachers, to kind of speak on some of the curriculum and things that they are doing with teachers and classrooms. And with that Apple-distinguished school ability, they've been invited to a lot of different conferences and learning opportunities that are not afforded to other non-Apple-distinguished schools. And they've been learning a lot, sharing a lot, what we're doing here at Teacher Road with other school districts, but also taking in a lot. So hopefully in the future, we'll have Ms. Jeanne Charletle, and hopefully we'll be having hopefully we'll be having back Ms. Rachel Robinson, who's away from us. She's working on a new tech project. Baby. And but we hope we have another techy in the fold. Um, so we'd definitely like to have them come back and kind of share some of those things that they're doing in the classroom. But when it comes to the infrastructure part, I've been challenged by the admin team to really make sure that we're ready to pivot as new technologies come come to the fore or as new events develop, you know, um. COVID nineteen caught us off guard. We were caught flat-footed and and really the goal is to make sure that 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 doesn't happen again, that that we're ready and able to pivot to whatever happens. And um, we've been reimagining and re-envisioning some of the current investments that Beecher has made in different technologies and um repurposing some of that equipment so that we're not incurring a larger expense. We can actually save some money and repurpose different technologies and kind of position ourselves for the future. A lot of it surrounds machine learning, AI. So we we're actually diving into kind of making sure that we're ready um to to adapt because that is something that is not going away. It's it's only going to um get stronger and stronger and making sure that we as teachers, as as lifelong learners are able to pivot and share with our learners here at Beecher Road School and empower them so that they understand these technologies. So a lot of that I'm kind of doing behind the scenes. We're 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 doing some really amazing things and and we look forward to doing more and which more amazing things. So that's kind of some of the things that we, oh no, the last update I just got on the way down. We are in a position to make a switch with our phone services, which I know Donna is going to be happy and Steven too. Well, no, are you financed though? Yep, yep. So so Steve's gonna be happy about this too. There's going to be some abilities to have cost savings potentially and more reliability and resiliency in a console phone system. So um we're actually looking forward to transitioning away from a lot of phone, old copper phone lines to internet-based phone systems. So we're really, really excited about that. That's coming very, very soon. Uh so that was the last update of the vendors in the building doing some other wiring work. So he just gave you that update that we're ready to cut over, so we just have to find the appropriate date to make that switch over. So we're excited. There's a lot that we're doing, and we look forward to a lot to come. So any questions?
Thank you. Did you mention the backup?
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, so so that that kind of ties in with some of our um concerns about reliability, resiliency. Um, making sure that because of course, you know, with all the technology, we rely on the internet. So if the internet goes out, it places us in a tough position, both not only in our business office, but in our classrooms as well. So we were able to get some backup internet services at a very, very, very uh attractive cost. Uh again, making the best use of the the funds, being good stewards with the funds that the town isn't trusting us with. So we're we're, this will be one thing that I have to worry about at night, the internet going out because we have reliable backup service. So yeah, some amazing, amazing things. Next time, I hope they have pictures and diagrams of all the beautiful ways my closets are now looking, and they're clean and uncluttered. So uh thank you so much for your time.
Two thumbs up. I think Erin might have a question from online.
I did. First of all, it was great. And while you might think that you are caught flat-footed, we in my job worked with kids throughout the entire state, and I will say Beecher Road did an amazing job of quickly pivoting to make sure that kids had devices and could connect. And so I know it took everyone um by uh by storm, but I I do think maybe maybe your perspective is uh you don't give yourself enough credit because because we did see what happened in the rest of other parts of the state. But I do have a question. As we move into the world of AI, as kids, you know, you you kind of do bridge into this semi-middle school. Um, obviously, always uh internet safety and tech safety with children is something very dear to my heart and close to my mind. And so I'm wondering if that is also a part of your planning and learning and beyond the like, you know, don't share your address with strangers or don't use your birth date for a password. If we are at all engaging kids in discussing those type of things and how? And how we're going to pivot to to AI and all of those things?
So first and foremost, uh uh security is top of our concern, especially security of our staff, but especially our our learners. Um, I, we're still in the preliminary phases of researching uh because a lot of these platforms, they do share sensitive information. Uh and we've been doing a lot of digging and kind of research to find out ways that we don't necessarily have to put that out on the internet. So we're still in the preliminary phase. We're actually still in the phase of still learning that the technology ourselves and understanding the full power potential of it ourselves uh so that we can then transition and and learn and teach our learners how to safely use these technologies. So we're still a bit of, we're some ways off, but I wanted to position ourselves so that when we are ready to make that leap, Beecher Road is ready to make that leap.
Good question.
Yeah, thank you. I I think even also just I'm looking, thinking of my own kids, you know, our kids may not wait for us to make that leap and and they may already be making that leap on their parents' phones or their own iPads and stuff. So to the extent that we um even in in our tech talks can talk to them about how a lot of these platforms are open, right? And and once they start sharing information on, you know, chat GPT and other things, um, you know, it it might not initially seem like a big deal, but I but there's no way to kind of scrape back that that information. And so just being careful with what they share in terms of their personal information, I think it it, we might want to just share that message with our community.
Yeah, one hundred percent, Erin. Um, and I definitely would like to probably talk to Superintendent Tenza after this meeting because I believe some of that is incorporating in their technology classes. So I definitely want to have our tech teachers back so they can give you more information about that and also kind of uh kind of make sure that we are, because I believe a lot of that is covered um in the lessons that they go through, but they can provide much more information, not only that, but other areas in which they're bringing technology more to the classrooms.
Awesome. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Uh Mike, Mike, did I see your hand out?
Yep, thank you. Uh, thanks, Anthony, for that great presentation. Um, I I was wondering also some of the similar things that um uh something similar to what Erin had mentioned. Um, but I was also wondering, um, and I'm not sure if you said this, my audio cut out for a minute, so forgive me if you spoke to this. But I was wondering about um Power School and how close we are to getting grades and um information like that in Power School for all students and parents to to see. Um, and how close we are to getting um classroom assignments in there. So would that be something that would be potentially be communicated to families rather rather than through mail, um snail mail next year?
So so right now, these are just some of the projects that I've been working on. There are a multitude of more projects that we're working on. Power School is on that docket, and some of the things that we're doing with Power School is pretty amazing now. Uh, right now, I think as of Friday, uh Friday, Ms. Lola pushed out a report cards. So if you have access to the parent portal, you can pull up your learners' report card. Um, we're going to be bringing more features to Power School. A lot of it's going to do with a lot of cleaning up and some tweaks and things that I have to apply. But so little but surely, we're going to be bringing some more awesome things to Power School. Um. And and that's it. So but but yeah, we are doing some amazing things with Power School, and we hope to bring some much more amazing things. Just got a little work to do to get there, but I'm committed and our admin team is committed, our superintendent is committed to making sure that we have a robust experience for our parents.
Great, thanks. I I didn't realize that grades were um in there um since Friday.
Ever since Friday, you can go and download the report card and print it out to your heart's content.
Thanks.
Okay, um, any other questions, board members? To Jay, go ahead.
I'd like to be involved in your answer. It's a very, very good presentation. But more importantly, I think you've been working with the hard as well as the software. So you've been a complete, built, gathered on technology. So I think it's very, very important to see recently by the time I was but the when I heard the feature of telling me a story about the roof, it was really, really good artistry. Yes, we'll see if you have using it just in our software, also in our infrastructure. I know I can now get into the access everywhere, which is amazing. I can just get to poke around with everybody. So it's really, really good. But I did have some questions, and I think we could 277 about 27. So I think I'll raise this later. I think I think it's related to that question. So I'm going to leave it there. Thank you so much. This was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else? Questions? Um, I want to just say that one thing you touched on, the other thing which I think is so key is the fact that you have become part of the team, and it's it's what's making um our work here so successful in the technology. You collaborate with Vito and with Gonda and Lisa and um and the longest people who push out those report cards and work with Power School. So the fact that you um just integrated yourself into that team, it's it's really wonderful. And so I thank you for the efforts that you've made in that area.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for um your report today. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Tenz?
No, I'm only a scholar.
We're top, I live in the now. So we're hoping that everyone out there can hear us better and see us, and that's great. Um, we got rid of something. It's German.
I have a lot to share with you, so I'm kind of excited. Um, so I want to start with Read Across America. Wait, actually, it feels a little creepy from this angle because it looks like it's
It's there, I am.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
It is. It turned to to you. It's curer, I feel.
And now I like, you can see yourself up there, seeing
like for the owl and talk to all of you. Good evening, everyone. I will start again. So I want to start by talking about Read Across America. Many of you were able to join us. We had a lot of community members come out. It was a wonderful day of literacy for our kiddos. And that whole week, we had some really fun spirited adventures with our kids, dressing in different fun ways, and some of our teachers are actually continuing the fun. Our first grade team, for example, has a March Madness book-themed situation happening where they have the entire A Wing hallway, including some second grade teachers voting on some special picture books, and they're going to get down to a final winner at the end of the month. I want to mention also that we, um, big shout out to our Amity High School colleagues because some of them came out to read with us, um, some of the students, so we welcomed back some of our former Beecher friends, and they were so excited to be here, and they read their stories to the kids, and they checked back in at the library, and they looked at me and they said, can we go back into the classrooms? Because we have some more time, and I said, absolutely, like, we would love to have you join us. So they were wonderful, and it was really fun to build that connection with Amity. Um, we also, in the theme of literacy, can had a kindergarten super reader parade. This has now become an annual tradition. My favorite part about it is that the kindergartners make adorable signs, sharing all of their amazing reading reading strategies that they have learned, and the entire community comes out to cheer them on, and they all signs up to praising all of our youngest learners. Um, and it's just really adorable and fun and a celebration of all of the learning and growth our kindergarten students have done. More literacy news, our fourth graders just recently had an informational writing museum. So our fourth grade students presented in various ways using both technology and um trifle boards and various other methods. They, there were presentations ranging from puppies to Taylor Swift, of course, um solar systems, the Celtics, there was a wide range of topics, and it was really, really fun for all of them to share. Parents were welcomed in and they got to circulate amongst the whole class and share a lot of different information and learn a lot, actually. Um, our sixth grade students also are recently, I told you, I have a lot to share right now. So it's very exciting time right now. Our sixth grade students are completing their FBI challenge. This is something else they do yearly. Um, and this is all about uh safety, about um living healthy lifestyles, making good choices. Um, final results are not in, but last I heard, we were creeping ups from third place. They also want to talk about our kindergarten students' leprechaun traps. I don't know if they ever tended to see any of them as they were coming into the building, but they were adorable as always, lots of rainbow and gold coins. And our kindergarten students went on some leprechaun hunts on last Friday, and um Lizzie the leopard gecko, the unofficial school mascot of Beecher, who lives in my office, visited many, many leprechaun traps also. She was at the top of my most recent principal's message, sitting in a leprechaun. Luckily, she escaped. Don't worry. Um. Two more pieces of information to share with you is Women's History Month. As many of you know, similar to Black History Month, we are sharing many resources through literature with many of with our entire school community, and also fun fact, morning announcements occasionally, not every day because we also have to do the jokes. But we mix the jokes with some women's history and fun facts, and our kiddos are always very excited and responsive to that information. And finally, administratively, we are meeting regularly with our teachers as part of our teacher evaluation cycle. We meet with all staff um fall, winter, and spring, and um the administrative team is just finishing up those teacher evaluation meetings. It's a really great opportunity just to have individual conversations about teachers' goals, the growth that they're making with their students, the work that they're doing, and the work they hope to continue accomplishing um in the rest of the year. So we wrapped those up already, but I failed to mention it in February. So I wanted to mention it now to let you know that that's ongoing work that we are continuing to do administratively. I did send out um a letter about Ramadan. We do have many students who are fasting, and we are supporting them this year as we do every year by providing them a place where they can go during Ramadan, so they're not in the cafeteria. Um, so we're giving them a few different choices where they can be. Uh, and I sent out a letter about that because, of course, we want to support all of our students um in all the ways that we can. I think that's it. That was a lot. Any questions?
Questions, board members?
Mr. Billings wanted to know why he had to go before me, and I said, you don't want to follow the candidates. Like, I got the time now.
Bigger for you to go first. Thank you, Lisa, for um all I think to as Mr. Speaker. Um, Beecher Road School Town Building Committee update. I'm going to turn to this side of the table, Bond, Donna, and Jeff. Um, I know that Bond and Donna have some things they can probably do too.
Sure. I always, I'll keep this.
You can't beat super readers.
I can.
But good news.
I guess I'm trying, I guess. So these are emotions that I like. So just a matter of pointing out, speaking of these things.
And we know that Sean and Donna had a sensitive meeting with they want to add anything about that other than for small.
It was long, and I'll just give a public shout out to to Donna Coleman, who needs to get many, many forms together and many, many signatures for the ones all around town. And um, I think maybe she was a scavenger, she was efficient and persevering and you know, we need to get some accolades from the state regarding our process and how well we go speak together and to be very prepared. So we feel very good about that. Yeah, so we're trying to hope to be prepared in terms of what we needed to focus, where you can get your job, and so I appreciate that.
Well, I I want to express my personal thanks and the thanks for everyone that's in this building for the work that you guys have done on this. in this building for the work that you guys have done on this because, um, you know, we see a light in the tunnel. It would be so nice to not have raindrops inside still. So thanks for that. We appreciate the town's support as well, Newcapso. Thank you for that. Um, we'll move on. Oh, any questions about that? We're in good shape. Um, Facilities Committee, you're on it here.
Okay, Great Facilities Committee, Mark Seven. We deal with the state and the bottom of the tier, so we're in shape there, just great. Um, the meeting with folks on the upgrades we just did was awesome. The state is actually got ready yet, which is huge, but said fiber wire and some builders were scared because there was a lot of way out upgrades, so we're in touch. The difference is still good value, solid, solid. Um, other than that, it's pretty good shape. Some definitely a lot of holes, which I think they're a very special.
Perfect. Any questions about facilities?
No, but Lynn, people online aren't hearing any of this. We're hearing a lot of gibberish. So can, uh, just FYI, I think it's the microphone, holding up the microphone. So just FYI.
Is something you can do to help with that for?
No, I don't think it's a tech issue, Lynn, because we're hearing you fine and we're hearing, I think it's, um, I think maybe the mic near is sometimes covered with paper.
No, it's a different system.
Oh, then I don't know. Never mind.
It's a little owl thing that's supposed to be picking up.
And you're, you're fine.
I'm Sarah Ben. All right. Um, Erin, give me a little signal when after Stephen starts talking. Okay? Let me find the estimating report and then we'll have better sense.
I know, I'm gonna have to do that. Can you hear me now? Okay. I use my former VR voice. Um, this was here now, more than half. Uh, total combined projected savings from all the categories is currently estimated at $300,000, which is up to 10% a month. On the lower expense side of the life ledger, we have some savings of approximately $133,000 we didn't nearly change for the last month, although we did actually have some changes within that. We need $6,000 of a social worker group grant that must be used up this year. At the same time, this was mostly balanced out as a potential retirement payout, 10%. So, and just to know that this category includes our unbudgeted, as our school sorts out.
So Stephen, you're going in and out. I don't know that matters. I mean, I don't know that you can do anything about it, but just so you know.
It's for everyone. It's not just you. I can't, the only person I've heard consistency is Lynn.
Yeah.
You know, well, we also
No.
It's just
Okay, Dan.
All right, while I keep talking toward the mic off, do the news gatherer. Um, so 200 series of benefits are currently on track of likely up with the surplus due to the unfilled paraphernalia. We're now estimating a surplus of 144,000, which is roughly double last month's estimate. Now, insurance costs are roughly consistent, but the cost of seniors, which you get into the Connecticut municipal employees' retirement system, have gone down. Basically, it's a year goes on, Donna will be responsible for everything I'm sharing. If, you know, basically getting better information, and that's why, why we're, uh, we're getting this different and it's working in our favor. So that's great. Uh, the same effect, but for a much higher original rate and the cost of coming in much lower. We have to get serious purchase of professional services. Uh, we're anticipating $78,000 in savings with the change in the asset our home model. However, this is down about $3,000 from February due to clause for some initial part-time temporary accounting support, as well as hiring a consultant to help facilitate a community survey related to our future space planning. So these are actually good investments in our future network we're making. For serious purchase of our services, we're projecting savings of 49,000, which is roughly consistent with prior month. Materials and supplies will be even, which is down from about a $5,000 overage last month. Because we, that is Donna and the administrative team, were able to reduce a large seasonal supply for producer. So 200 series for mature equipment has been joining savings, and we're able to provide $45,000 in loan books, which Anthony actually referenced. However, and we anticipate all spending on a bunch in this category due to fees are currently on track and in the non-experienced, explaining his expenses, which primarily the seniors is on track. The only item at this point that is on a higher extent type of ledger is other virgin services, which we're currently anticipating being about $107,000 for the budget, although this is nearly unchanged from February. And this reflects two unbudgeted outlays, which have spent well with related transportation expenses.
Okay. So Erin reports that this is going in and out. Can you hear me, Erin? Yeah.
Okay, you're the only one we hear regularly, Lynn. No one else.
Okay, thanks. So we're, so those, that's good information for us. I'm sorry for those of you who are online watching, but it's good information for us to try and, um, improve this system for, for next month so that people can hear. And I'm going to be giving meditation and, um, voice projection lessons between now and our next meeting. Hopefully that'll help too. Uh, but you guys, keep us, keep, keep me posted, Erin, okay? Thank you. Um, Erin, your next policy committee. Oh, yeah, sorry. Erin, hold on, hold on. Jay's gonna ask a question about, I forgot, finance committee. Sorry. Jay, you can now decide.
I'm gonna have to speak out. Erin.
No, I have no idea what you're saying. I mean, I vaguely heard you say, can you hear me?
Uh, so you're getting a stutter. If I, if I sort of speak really slow, I think you might get
Yep.
So the question I have is one related to just the savings, because significant savings this year, and it's an exception to saving for many years. When I look at Ceres, the 4% on the $5,000 daily gives me my math is wack, about $10,000 saving. But you're about 120, so that's coming from vacancies. When I look at the psychologists, it's coming from vacancies. Great, I have the SRO model that's offsetting us on cost terms. It's the vacancies. So I was going to sort of put out, this may not be entirely finance. Is there anything we can do with trying to do something, improving the fairs going up? Find the psychologists, please, decision for the people. Where are some things in the we're missing? And I know it's this, what is it? We can do to help you make that happen? Does that make sense? We need to chase all the brands, internal incentives, reputation, whatever the brands are. What we need to do to try and win that formal resource in this?
We even, I believe it was today, Carrie Northrop, he went to, uh, a job fair. Is that, are you, are you Carrie's not in that? Is it today?
It's tomorrow.
Right. So I mean, we are pursuing, you know, job fairs at universities. We are constantly, you know, reposting and moving things up in the queue, right? So let's sit there a while, get seats to the bottom and then push it back up to the top. It is
I don't know what he had asked before, before that, though.
What else can we do? But like, I feel like this is what everybody's doing. Everybody's competing. Yeah, nobody's, it's not just us.
No, everyone, I mean, other districts are all in the same place with mental health support. Um, we will probably see an increase next month because we have a number of evaluations that are being picked up by an outside provider to complete evaluations so that our current staff can keep seeing kids. So I anticipate some of that cost gonna show up at some point, but there is, there are no one, there, there's no one in the queue. And anything that has been offered even through agencies, it's all remote, which is not the best for kids, so.
It is a, it is a problem for us. We are just thirsty. But I will give credit to the administrative team. They're, they're very creative and, and again, like, going out, setting up and sending jobs here. We are, we are looking to make work that others aren't doing. Sorry, I'm sorry.
So my apologies, I think I'm signing this law.
Okay. Any feedbacks? Thank you. Policy committee, Erin?
Hi, so this is just, uh, the policy that we spoke at last board meeting and we put on 30-day review. This is policy 5111. And really, it was modified due to the legislation that passed that changed, um, the cutoff date for kindergarten. And, um, so it's a response to that. And while we had that policy open, we really clarified what documents were needed to establish residency. So we discussed it at the last meeting, put it on 30-day review and are now ready to vote on it.
So do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I don't have the motion language right in front of me because I am remote, but I will, if someone else wants to read exactly how it's written, I'd appreciate that or I can do my best.
Policy 5111 is revised. Erin made a motion to adopt policy 5111 as revised. Do I have a second? We're over. Motion made by Erin Williamson, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm noting Erin and Mike have also voted in favor. Marcia, it is unanimous. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Lynn.
No worries. Um, Kate Leeson report? Sarah Ben?
Where is, uh, it's got much better all kinds of things that we need. Last year, we and for a couple of younger or
October is the new
So there's some opportunities there. So new things up. I think it was better. Or the match was about, was together.
Sure. Okay, good. We're, we're sending to Marcia, Marcia will land that. Okay. I assume that's okay, Marcia. Thank you, Erin. Thank you. Um, anything else?
I would say just having a page, but I completed last week. I was wanting to
They didn't get any updates on that. Yep. Hey, thank you. Uh, I'm also going to, um, report that I attended the FOIA Freedom of Information Act workshop held by the town on, on March 5th. I received, I have, um, passed out highlights of the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, little cards, ready to carry in your wallet or wherever for, um, your information. I thought it was a great workshop and, um, good information. And I think it might have been, if you may, you can shake your head, yes or no, recorded so that, um, you can access it when you have a free moment of
We can record it on the website.
Website, thank you. So, um, it really was, it was, it was very informative, so. And it was a little over an hour. Great questions, great information. So, um, I encourage you to, to take a look at the, um, little part in favor and, um, so that you're aware of freedom of information and, um, how that affects us as board members. And then I will also note that, uh, at your place this evening is this lovely green laminated sheet with the committee roster, wish list, all the people who are on each of our subcommittees and the meeting dates. So Marcia has made those so kindly for us so that you can stick it up somewhere. Brooke's holding up a sign that says, thank you, Marcia. We really appreciate that. He was all on track. So, um, those are two, uh, things that are at your place or in this meeting. That will be helpful. Um, I'm going to announce the upcoming meeting presentation. Uh, April's Board of Education meeting will include a presentation on Beecher Road School Summer Program as well as the Beecher Road School Extended Date Program. So I'm going to ask board members to reach out to Donna if there's anything specific that you'd like to see addressed in either of those presentations and then she'll pass the word on to
I'm gonna run some guest speakers for those
So there are people who are going to come and present. Yeah. Um, I know extended day people are very excited. I'm, I'm very excited about so, um, we'll be prepared for that. Uh, new business on the agenda is the Healthy Food Survey for 2024, 2025. There's a lot of paperwork in your path about that. Um, we need to do, this is something we need to do every year. Do you have anything you want to say about it, Donna or Don? We just do it every year.
It's, it's every year. It's required. It tends to give more of a patient break stress because all of those words are important in the meaning of the motion. So it's, it's a great thing. We need it, we appreciate it. It's just no pressure for whoever else to be I don't know that
We're good, uh, I didn't
But ours.
Okay. Any other questions about why we took this? Okay. So as Donna mentioned, the motion needs to, um, be read in a second, as Mark had said, so are you our reader?
I'll be the reader.
Thank you.
Right, let's go. To begin, I move that pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1022 to 215, the Whitbridge Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, wrote by Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July, July 2024 through June 30, 2025. This certification challenge will sample to students separately from reimbursed for meals and alternates and from all sources, including but not limited to school sports, vending machines, stores, your own culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school organizations and groups.
That's it. Do I have a second to that? One. Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, seconded by Lauren Franchese. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I'm noting that Erin and Mike remotely raised their hands, so it's a unanimous vote, Marcia. Thank you very much. And then we have to have the food beverage certification, um, motion.
Right. I move that Whitbridge Board of Education will allow the sale of students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 1022 to 1 Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions warrant that. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food beverage items are not sold from the vending machine or school store. An event is in practice that involves more than just a regular local standard of practice leading or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays and just last debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals and debating games are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after The regular school day is period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the events can be held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Sarah Beth? Motion made by Stephen Lawrence, read well, and seconded by Sarah Beth Delgree. Any discussion on the food beverage certification? Motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I'm noting that Erin and Mike have raised their hand remotely, so it's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you very much. It's always a fun one to get. All right, and next on the agenda is the acceptance of the certified staff resignation that Bonda mentioned in her superintendent update. So I will ask for a motion to accept the retirement of Elena Levine effective June 30. Do I have that motion? Ready? If that's, okay, Brooke.
I think that we accept the admiran, so, Elena, we need effective June 30, twice a year.
You do have a second. Jeff? Motion made by Brooke Hopkins, seconded by Jeff Hughes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Please signify by raising your hand. I will note that Erin Williamson and Mike Strandler have raised their hand remotely, so it's a unanimous vote, Marsha. Did you have something you wanted to say, Jay?
I won't throw up, I won't. I'm taking a lot of fun.
Yes, for sure. Elena, I saw was on earlier, but of course we want to wish her the best. I will tell you, Elena, that there are wonderful things that happen during retirement, and there's always opportunity to volunteer, so, go. I'll make my monthly service announcement now. The Policy Committee is going to meet on Monday, April 1st, at 4:30 PM. The Curriculum Committee will be Thursday, April 4th, at 4:00 PM. The Finance Committee is meeting Tuesday, April 9th, at 4:30 PM. I have gotten information from Town Hall that the town's preliminary budget hearing is scheduled for Thursday, 8/25, in the Center Gym, so I would encourage all of you to put that on your calendar. And I'm going to note that we had originally scheduled our Board of Education meeting for Tuesday because historically the preliminary budget hearing was on Monday. But now, the preliminary budget hearing would not interfere with our regular third Monday of the month board meeting, so I am going to propose that our next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held, as it should be, on the third Monday of the month, Monday, April 22nd, at 7:00. Everybody got that? So we're going back to our regular Monday meeting.
Just to be clear, that's the fourth Monday, because the third Monday would be during spring.
Sorry.
Right.
Sorry, people, you're absolutely right, thank you very much. But the date is, thank you, Monday, April 22nd, rather than what's listed on the school calendar is Tuesday. And then it'll be consistent with our Monday meetings. Okay.
Lynn, you really do need to teach that projecting. You're really clear.
We got it, Erin. There's a schedule, there's a schedule of meeting to do that. We're up to public comment again. Any public comment? Who are participating, please raise your hand in the participants list. I don't see any, no public comment in person as well. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn at 8:22 PM. Jay?
Okay. I think we did.
Down, down, up. Jay, are you making that call? Jay's making a motion to adjourn. Brooke seconded, Nika, thank you very much. All of you in favor? Please signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much. 8:22. Again.